The Tuesday, August sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Six o'clock meeting, just a few minutes behind schedule due to throw discussions during closed session. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Stroud to do the invocation for our board as we move forward making decisions for our county.
Our gracious heavenly Father, as we come to you tonight, we ask you to open our ears, open our hearts, open our minds. We ask you to give us the wisdom to be strong enough to make decisions for good decisions, good godly decisions, for the citizens of Aridale County, that we do it for no selfishness, no personal gain, that we do it for the good of this county and the good of the people of this county and this nation. Lord, tonight, we're minus one of our own. We ask you to be with the Brown family and the passing of Commissioner Brown's mother and that you grant him and his entire family your love, grace, and mercy. Lord, we ask you to be with those in harm's way and those that don't know you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Manager Moll, we have some adjustments to the agenda this evening. Would you please go over those?
Absolutely. We do have three adjustments. The first one is an addition under appointment before the board, and that is the Aridale County Council on Aging to present and receive approval of fiscal year twenty-five home and community care block grant funding plan. We also have an addition under administrative matters, which is item eight point ten, and that's the approval to extend the current resolution period for the opioid settlement funds. And then finally, we have addition under appointments to boards and commissions, which is the home and community care block grant appointment.
Thank you. Motion to approve the adjusted addenda.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Stroud. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that unanimous adjustment approval. No presentations of special recognitions or awards, however, we do have an appointment before the board this evening. Manager Moll, do you have anything information-wise before she begins?
Well, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Bearclough, and she is a practiced. So she is with Aridale County Council on Aging, and as I said before, she's going to present and needs to have approval from the board of the fiscal year twenty-five home and community care block grant funding plan. Jennifer?
Hello. Good afternoon, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I first want to thank you for your continued support of the block grant and the older adults here in Aridale County. And I want to start with sharing some of the wins and the successes of last year's funding. I think it's always important, you know, as we come before you each year and ask for the approval and the match for these funds, that we also share with you what your dollars did last year. So I wanted to share last year's numbers. And so this is the fiscal year. So last year, with our block grant money, we were able to provide over twenty thousand trips to older adults sixty and over here in Aridale County, and that covers the entire county. That's taken individuals from doctor's appointments in Mooresville to Statesville, Union Grove, Troutman, all over the county, and not just doctor's appointments, but trips to the senior center to get your hair done, to get your needs met at Christian Mission or NC Feed, to the nutrition sites and so on. So with those dollars, we were able to serve twenty, over twenty thousand trips. We served thirty-five thousand six hundred approximately meals to individuals here in Aridale County over the age of sixty. And so those were the home-delivered meals in addition to the congregate meals at one of our four congregate sites located in Troutman, Mooresville, Statesville, and again Harmony. Additionally, our in-home services, which includes respite care, chore services, personal care, and the adult day services, with the block grant, we provided over twelve thousand hours. And then in addition to that, with additional funding, I think it's important to note that that total is closer to forty thousand hours provided, and that is such a huge service in need here in Aridale County, that in-home services. And then we also provided over three hundred thousand dollars' worth of senior center services to over forty-five hundred older adults. So between the two senior centers here in Aridale County, in Mooresville and Statesville, we were able to use those funds in addition to others that we received. So I feel like those are great successes in the last year, and while that's not a reflection of all the services provided, that is a reflection of what is provided through the block grant, which is a large majority of the funding that we have here in Aridale County for the Council on Aging. This year, you'll have seen some changes to the block grant committee. I'm happy to report that our committee is back in full force. So it had taken some hits during COVID and just transitioned. And so we now, as you know, you've appointed five new individuals to our block grant committee, and we're very excited about that and excited for what that means for the aging community here in Aridale County, to have so many additional individuals excited and to advocate for the needs. As if you are paying attention to politics and what is going on right now, the Older Americans Act is actually up for reauthorization, and there's a lot of conversation and advocacy needed. So having those individuals in our corner is also very helpful. What we were faced with this year, however, as a committee, was we saw a loss in our block grant funding, and I provided that in your packet, I believe, showing you what each county in our region received. And so that's actually based on demographics and census data. It has nothing to do with anything that our county has done or the services that we need. It's based on the older adults moving into our area, the income for those individuals. And so while we have seen a large increase in older adults, some of those older adults are falling in a higher bracket for income, and then also rural area. This past year, Aridale County saw an expansion in its rural area, but that's not reflected in the census data that they've pulled from. So we do hope to see an increase next year in funds based off that data. But we did see close to twenty-three thousand dollars of a decrease in funds. That still keeps us above two years ago when we saw an increase. But I just want to share with you, while twenty-three thousand dollars may not sound like a lot out of a million, that is an impact. And so I did those numbers for you. And so we were tasked with, you know, figuring out how to make those changes and those cuts across the board. And so that, the twenty-three thousand dollars equates to approximately seven hundred and sixty-six hours of adult daycare, one thousand eight hundred and fifteen congregate meals, two thousand three hundred and ninety-six home-delivered meals, six hundred and eighty-one hours of level-one personal care, or level-one in-home services, which is chore, seven hundred hours of personal care, twelve hundred transportation trips, five hundred and eleven hours of adult day health, and then six hundred and seventy-nine hours of personal care. And while that's individual numbers, we had to look at those numbers and decide where we needed to make some changes. Additionally, this year, you'll see some changes in what we've chosen to fund. We have added adult day health to the list of items, and that's really to reflect the accreditation of Aridale Adult Day Services, previously Elder Center, and their new accreditation with adult day health. So we did move some of the funds from adult day care down to adult day health. And then we've also added level-three personal care. And so that's providing care for someone who might come home with an ostomy or a catheter and needs additional services and care, and those are all at no cost to the individual. But what that does reflect is that we're seeing a need for those services in our county because our adults are not only aging, they're aging quickly, and their needs are outside of the current capacity. So we have added those services to the code this year so that we're able to meet the need of those individuals that we weren't serving. And we're excited to do that. We actually have a list of individuals to start on all those. Lastly, I want to share, I know you guys have been in session all afternoon, so I want to keep it fairly brief. I did include with our signature page some information and some demographics for you guys to look at. I think that the number for aging, I think Beth might have these, the information for aging in not only Aridale County but in our state is so important. So when you have the opportunity and time to take a look at those, you'll see the North Carolina aging profile for Aridale County and for the state provided from the Division of Aging. And so I hope you do have the opportunity to take a look at that. But I want to share with you some of the things that we have seen a really big increase in this year and that we're really proud to really bring into our block grant funding is reaching the entire county. And you may look at me and go, but you said all along you reached the entire county, and we do. We reached the county in so many of our services, our transportation, our in-home services, and so on. But with our meals, they've always been limited to where someone could be delivered, the meal could be delivered within an hour and so on. And so in this past year, we have done a pilot program with some additional grant funding to serve frozen meals to the entire county. And so we are serving, we have served over four hundred new individuals in the last eight months with this program. And so when we previously weren't able to serve someone in the Union Grove or Love Valley or the Cleveland area, this is just right there on the line, you know, that we weren't able to serve them because they didn't fall in that hot meal area, we're now able to provide them with five frozen meals once a week. And so we've integrated that program into our block grant funding this year. Additionally, with the senior centers, we've really expanded and brought those out into the community. So we have senior centers on the go, and so they're out in the communities, meeting at Rua Tan clubs, churches, because while the senior center is open to anyone and everyone, if you're not able to get there or you're not comfortable in that area, then you're not using that resource. So we've made it really important to bring that resource to the individuals in the community. And what's really fantastic about that is those are the areas of our community where we also see, you know, food insecurity. And so we may be out visiting a home and delivering a meal to someone, and while we're there, we see that their steps are not safe for a volunteer, and we're partnering with United Way to work on housing repairs. And so we refer that individual and make sure that, you know, they're able to, or they need a box of food. And so we've partnered with NC Feed to make sure that they've gotten a boxed meal or the farmer's market vouchers, or, you know. We're really bringing resources to the entire community. And if I had to reflect on what, you know, I'm most proud of that we've accomplished this year, it is that. And bringing those services into our block grant funding in this year, you'll see some changes where we've increased the amount of funding for home-delivered meals, because we see that that's more of a need than the congregate sites currently are. And so we've adjusted there to make up for that and to provide those meals across the county. But I just, I thank you again for your continued support, and if you have any questions regarding the funding, I'm happy to answer any of those.
This is very helpful and enlightening, too, and it, not only are you directly, positively impacting the aging population, but you're impacting their families around them because that allows not just peace of mind, but it also provides an opportunity for people to go to work while the adult that can't stay alone-
Absolutely.
-is at a safe environment. They can go to work and not worry about that. We talk about the shortage in preschool, daycares and things, that's there, but there's also a high need for the aging parent or grandparent, the population there, too.
Absolutely.
And hats off to you with the frozen food idea. I think that's impressive because that, it's one trip for those farther distances to cover for a week, and then they can either microwave or whatever.
Absolutely. And they're able to utilize that meal when it's appropriate for them.
Right.
You know, maybe they are, they have someone, you know, a granddaughter or something that visits them during the day, and she provides lunch, but they need that weekend meal or that evening meal. And we actually just secured funding through a Cannon Grant Foundation to purchase a small transit vehicle to actually help us with transporting all that. So we're really excited to see that program grow and allow, doing the frozen, we don't have to adhere to the same- for an aging parent that lives in that home. And so, you know, being able to provide those services and that caregiver support truly is a blessing. And our, the individual that handles that program just celebrated 20 years with us, and I applaud her for her hard work and dedication for keeping that program going. And thank you for this kind words.
I serve on this board for us. I'd like for us to consider and think about making them hold that 23,000 or 22,696 shortfall because what she mentioned, and she can go over it again if necessary, the hours of care and the meal reductions and all those things for $23,000 with, you know, they're increasing their area they're servicing, but, you know, these are our elderly people and we've got to take care of them. I think we have a responsibility to do that. And if y'all are good with that, I'd like to see if we could ask Beth to consider where we could pull that from, and if it requires a budget amendment, we could consider that at the next meeting to try to make them hold on this because I'd like to see those cuts reinstated if we can.
Do you have that number on, which page is that one?
It's 23, it's 22,696. It's on the back of Page One.
Yes, sir.
And she named out the different cuts that that budget, that reduction in budget would cause you to do. So if we were able to find that funding, I'd like to ask our board to consider that and reinstate those services and meals and services that you've had to cut.
Thank you.
Because right now with the economy and the challenges we are facing nationally, our citizens don't, our elderly people especially, nobody should suffer, but these people sometimes, that's the only meal they get.
Absolutely. And you'll see that we also, and I'm just speechless, and I appreciate that suggestion and that gratitude that you're offering. And you'll see on the, on your budget there that we have had to increase some of the cost of services, the service units, because we have seen an increase in, in like transportation with our contractors and.
It's a business.
It is, absolutely. I think our caterer is ready to stop answering my emails because every time he says, let's go up this percent, I'm like, how about this? And so, you know, it's this back and forth, but it is. And they are, they have to do business as well, but I appreciate that.
I think it's important, I'd like to ask us to consider that, but, you know, this is an area, if we can make that difference, I know it's appreciated because our population is increasing in age and.
Population, you know, it brings.
To me, it's our responsibility to take care of our elders and our, you know, as they age, and I'd like to ask us to consider that.
All right. Manager Moll, would you follow up with that and add it to the next?
Absolutely.
With your help. 20th Agenda.
August 20.
On that one, too. Vice Chair Conley, did you have any comments you wanted to share before?
Just appreciate you doing the job that you do in your staff day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell them thank you for everything.
The difference you make in lives every day.
We have a fantastic staff, and I truly could not do it without them. They make it more than a job and.
Teamwork, isn't it?
It is.
There's so much more that can be done when you have those extra sets of hands.
It really, really is. You know, I started the Council on Aging as the program manager at the South Ardell Senior Center and have held multiple positions over the last six years. And, you know, the team that you have truly makes coming to work a success, but it makes what we're able to do a success, and they do believe in what they do, and it shows every day. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Manager Moll, since we're discussing financial impact and changes, should we just ask for approval of the presentation, or you want to wait until?
What you can do is go ahead and, do you need to go back and amend your funding plan if we're going to come up with the additional funding?
I will not have to amend the funding plan because I can add it to the special appropriations from the county, I believe.
Okay. Then what I would recommend is that we approve the funding plan as presented with that one change to special appropriations, and then we'll go back, try to figure out where we're going to pull that, and if we need to come back with a budget amendment, we'll do that at the next meeting, but it won't hold her up. She can go ahead.
So she can go ahead and move forward on that one. Then, is everyone clear?
Yes.
All right. Motion to accept then the presentation and the funding plan.
For FY25 Home Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan with Special Appropriations allocation.
Yes. As Help said on that one, too. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are unanimous on that one. Thank you.
Very much. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, we'll continue on down the agenda. And that, yes, it is, thank you. As we go on to the next category, it is a public hearing this evening. Manager Moll, would you like to get that one rolling with Matthew Todd?
The next item is a public hearing to consider a request from applicant Howard Bryan of Piedmont Landco LLC to rezon approximately 1.273 acres along Murdoch Road. And our screen is going up, but it will come back down because Mr. Todd has a presentation that as soon as we.
I assume that was a message not to. For the presentation.
There, here it goes. Okay.
This one is pretty straightforward. It's a, it's okay, I'll go ahead and start. It's a rezoning from an existing RU, R and HB to general business. Back in October of '23, there was a section behind this track that the board approved the rezoning on, and this left a little donut hole. You can see it on the screen there in blue. It still leaves a property adjacent to it that also the owner has not signed on with the rezoning. So this is just starting to fill in that donut hole. There's been no opposition expressed at planning board or phone calls of opposition. It's my understanding that owner probably will eventually rezone that piece as well. Staff's recommending it. Planning board voted unanimously to recommend it. The property fits with the 2045 Horizon Plan Employment Center Industrial Flex. It's close proximity to the interstate and consistent with the recent rezonings. That's the land use plan. Currently, there is a vacant house on it, abandoned house. Just some pictures of the property. Looking back toward the interchange, looking directly across and south toward Troutman. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this request.
Just for clarity, the property that's next door, I think it looked like maybe Troutman Animal Hospital. Am I in the right place?
Yes.
Yes. Where the concrete is.
Where the concrete is, yes.
All right.
Any further questions? Okay. At this time, then I will open up the public hearing. And there's no one signed up for it, but I will ask Howard Bryan if he, if you have anything you'd care to share at this time? Okay. And I don't believe we have anyone else here to speak, so I want to close the public hearing on this one. Any other questions or comments on this matter? All right, then I would entertain a motion on this public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that said approval is consistent with the adopted 2045 Horizon Plan and is also reasonable and in the public interest because the entirety of the property lies within the 2045 Horizon Plan Employment Center Industrial Flex office designation is within close proximity to the I-77 corridor and will be consistent with recent zoning district trends in that area.
By Commissioner Help, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're unanimous on that. Well, that takes us right into the administrative matters that we discussed during the four o'clock hour. Manager Moll, would you care to go through those, please?
The first item was a request from Planning and Development to consider calling for a public hearing on August the 20th, 2024 at 6:00 PM in regard to a text amendment to the Land Development Code. There was a request from the Sheriff's Office to enter into a three-year contract for an inmate phone and video visitation system with NCIC. And also that was authorizing the county manager to sign that agreement as well. A request from Social Services to review and approve an amendment to the DHHS Ardell County Memorandum of Understanding. The only addition to this was to correct the fiscal years, it's intended to be fiscal years '24, '25, and '25, '26. There was a request from Animal Services to approve Budget Amendment Number Three to appropriate the first year of a grant from Best Friends Animal Society through Pender County in the amount of $17,780. A request from Animal Services to approve Budget Amendment Number Four to utilize donated funds to build a new play yard area and re-terre the existing play yard. There was a request from Tax Office for acceptance of the annual tax settlement of 2023 taxes. A request from Fire Services to discuss minimum fire response requirements. There was discussion by the board, and the board chose by consensus to move forward with Option One, which is to divide the district that is currently Wayside Volunteer Fire Department's District between Cool Springs and Troutman Fire Department. There was, we presented the county construction projects update, and that was just for informational purposes only. There was a request from Administration for approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on July the 16th, 2024, and the report to the people on July the 22nd, 2024. And the final item was approval to extend the current resolution period for the opioid settlement funds. This action extended the current resolution period to December 31st, 2024. All other parts of that resolution remain the same.
A motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous on that approval. And we don't have an announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions, but if you'll notice, there is, and that was one of the adjustments, an appointment to the Home and Community Care Block Grant. There's an appointment for that. You'll see Jimmy Ann Johnson. It's Ardell County's DSS Adult Services. She is supervisor, so she's got the, certainly got the experience on there. All right, we'll need a motion to appoint.
I make a motion that we appoint Jimmy Ann Johnson to the Home and Community Care Block Grant.
Thank you, Commissioner Stroud. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any unfinished business? No. It is not a public comment period. It's time for commissioner updates, and I'd like to kick that one off this evening. It's interesting that at this time, over at our Ardell County Public Library, we have a gentleman being recognized and in receipt, that he is receiving the Order of the Long Leaf Pine from Governor Cooper. He actually received it on July the 23rd of this year, '24. But he is being celebrated this evening. Let me tell you a little bit about this gentleman. I'm sure you'll recognize the name of OC Stone Street III, also known as Chip DeSome. He was known to me as Mr. Stone Street because he was my history teacher at Raleigh Middle School back many years ago. He was born right here in North Carolina, in Statesville, in 1947, to a Mr. and Mrs. OC Stone Street Jr. of Mooresville. He is an Eagle Scout, served in the U.S. Navy during the Vietnam War as part of the Admiral's Staff, and as a musician, he played trumpet in the Fleet Band. Chip also taught history in the public schools for 31 years and worked part-time teaching writing at Mitchell Community College. He has given numerous presentations and talks on local history and as a columnist for almost 20 years in the Statesville Record and Landmark until it was bought out recently by the outside firm, having published thousands of articles on state interest and history. Chip has published several books on local history, one of which is in the Library of Congress. He has awarded the Order of the Long Leaf Pine by Governor Cooper on July 23rd, 2024. So next time you see OC floating around, give him a congratulations on that one. And I will pass it over to anyone else who has updates.
I don't really have any updates. It's funny, the small circles of life that happens. Mr. Stone Street was a teacher of mine.
Really?
As well. Mr. Stone Street taught at Central Elementary, and of course, you know, heard he was actually, if I'm correct, I believe he was a bandsman in the Navy and to eventually come home and become the Veterans Officer after my career, and so him as a teacher to be a client to me and someone with a lot of knowledge that he readily shared in the veterans world. One of the most interesting things, I always joke with Mr. Stone Street about in my education years was he was, he taught all of his kids in our group. He taught shop as well, and most of us are members of the Nine-Digit Safety Society with Mr. Stone Street.
Well, that matches up because he as well has a very dry-wit sense of humor.
Yes.
Have you been on the receiving end of that?
I have. So we're all members of that Nine-Digit Safety Society of where he made sure we didn't have any type of injuries. But one of the projects, and still a joke between Mr. Stone Street and I, is we, one year, that year, he wanted us to make this particular, he wanted us to learn about another country, and he wanted us to learn about Australia. So he was going to teach all of us about Australia in classroom, and in shop, we were going to make boomerangs. We all made sticks.
But I imagine you threw them anyway.
Well, we did, and we all went and got them. But I actually still have my stick that I made in shop. And I commonly, when OC would come by and see me at the Veterans Office, I would tell him that I still have my stick, and, you know, he would, he would always laugh.
And I extended the opportunity for him to come and see us, to his son, Chris, after he had let me know about that. But he said at this point, he said he didn't know that he would come to a second appearance, however, let him know that we would be talking about him at length this evening, so.
Congratulations, Mr. Stone Street.
Do we have any OC stories to my right? I didn't realize that we were.
Yes. That's what's wrong with both of us now.
So we can pass it on to him, is that right?
Yes, so.
Updates or comments to my right?
Kind of an update. I know we got some cost back on the high school and FFNE numbers, and can we maybe look at any, put that on the next meeting, the first meeting of September, so we can discuss that, please?
Second meeting in August?
August, I'm sorry. The first meeting in September, whichever one's the board's happy with.
Do you know when the 90 days is up for them to negotiate with the contractor?
I believe it's September 5th. It's either the end of August or the first week in September.
So that would be timely to do the August 20th?
So we do August 20th, I think.
Okay.
And also I'd like to remind everybody, just not too far down the road here, the Tropical Depression Storm Hurricane, everything that people are affected by, we may get affected by that issue as well, but we need to keep those people in our prayers. People already lost their lives and stuff, so.
Yes.
It's a very serious thing, and it's, you know, we can remember problems that we've had here in this county and stuff, so very long ago, we had some problems, too. So we need to remember those folks and keep them in our prayers.
Indeed. Thank you.
Couple things for me. I'll be in Forsyth County starting tomorrow for the NCAA C C Annual Conference that I'm the delegate of and board meeting. I was elected to a fourth term as the District 12 Director for Carrera, Sastin, Ardell, Lincoln Row, and Stanley Union in Mecklenburg two weeks ago. And there'll be a formal PR for that. But also I wanted to, you, Melissa, and Beth, and Matthew, got an email from Vicky Sawyer. Will y'all look at that and see what date y'all may be available, if possible, for either August 19th or August 31st? The topic she wants to talk to us about in staff is she's wanting to do some type of legislation potentially to help with the orphan roads problem within the county where people, where developers have come in typically in the ETJs, and the developers have either failed to do all their due diligence and/or the roads now need maintenance, and the HOAs either didn't communicate, weren't aware, whatever the problem was, that it was their responsibilities because it was not turned over to DOT. In the past, we've tried to get, and tap in when you're ready, Beth, is in the past, we've tried to get legislation for the NCAA C C to where there's some type of interlocal agreement between the counties and municipalities and the ETJ to where, because it's the municipalities in that ETJ's responsibility for all the zoning and all of those things for the developers and builders in those areas. But in the past, there's been some bonds released that maybe shouldn't have been released before the projects were checked and finished. Is that a fair way to say that? So what she's wanting to do is meet with us and get some ideas from staff, what legislation would look like to just dot i's, cross t's, and potentially, some counties have even started some type of program that the state could either help pay or get funding for that we would allocate for, and some of these HOA. the HOAs, if there was a loan out to the HOA to do some of these repairs, which I don't know what that looks like. It's just, I'm just letting you guys know that's the request for the meeting. And/or at a minimum, when the developers get these roads and all up to minimum DOT standards, the goal in the future would be to get the HOA to agree upfront in writing that they know they're taking it over or to have them, the developer, request DOT to take over maintenance and upkeep of these roads while they're DOT standards. And that's not being done. And so she's looking for our help and to try to figure out a way to push legislation. And I know the NCACC, this is a bipartisan effort. It's impacted all counties to some degree, especially the growth counties to where some of these i's are not getting dotted and t's crossed. And the citizens, when the time comes to maintain these things, they're looking at us to do that and it never was our responsibility to do it. So if we can figure out legislation that helps prevent that and potentially some funding, grant funding that may help these existing orphaned roads in the county to be brought up to standards and ask the state to take them over, she's just looking for our help to identify what that legislation will look like.
And she's working on identifying the road, the actual roads themselves.
That, and she's wanting staff's help of identifying all the orphaned roads in our county. And then our input, I think she sent you and I, and if anyone else is wanting to do it, you know, that's fine. Matthew and Beth's involvement or anybody else Beth thinks is necessary to just look and give her lots of ideas of how a remedy, what a remedy would look like. Because there's a desire to get that done in the legislature because it, it's technically a bipartisan problem.
Sure.
And so those two things are all that I had for you.
Okay. All right. Then we will continue on down. No new business? County managers report? Has that changed since four o'clock or is it the same?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. All right. Then? We did have a closed session in regards to attorney-client and economic development with no information to move forward or action to report out. So at this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, ma'am?
Motion by Commissioner Help. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.